All right, well, we can get started. Welcome, everyone. Thanks for coming out to the New Brunswick Board of Education Candidates Forum. I'm really happy to be here. Thank you so much to Unity Square Community Center for having us in this space. And I'm the Director of Empower Our Neighborhoods, which is a local community organization here in New Brunswick. So I'll, you know, say very briefly a little bit about the community center space that we're in to promote the offerings that it has for the community, and then very briefly a bit about the organization that I'm representing, and then we'll get into the event. So Unity Square Community Center is a project of Catholic Charities, Dioceses of Metuchen. They offer a lot of community services here in this space at the corner of Remsen and Sedam Street. They offer food distribution on Tuesdays and Fridays. On the other days, they offer translation services in this space. Their immigration representative comes in on Wednesdays to offer assistance to community members. There's a whole lot else that goes on here. So if you are interested in learning more about Unity Square Community Center, you can look them up. Unity Square, New Brunswick, pretty easy to find. And it's a really great, a great space for this type of event, and thank you so much for having us. And like I said, I'm with Empower Our Neighborhoods, which is a local community organization here, based in New Brunswick, really just working on any of the issues that are important across the board to New Brunswick residents that are of concern for people here locally, and trying to, you know, bring a little bit more transparency and information directly to the public by hosting events like this. So the candidate forum that we're having here is for New Brunswick Board of Education. The elections are coming up later this month. And it's really important that we have candidate forums, you know, just important to the democratic process. It creates greater transparency in what the candidates stand for, so the public has a real opportunity to learn about these local positions that are representing us and that are, you know, standing for our children in the school system. Creates an opportunity for public dialogue and for questions that members of the community may have for the folks that are seeking to represent them in this office. And it creates additional visibility for the candidates that are running to get their message out there. So really happy to be having this event. There are six candidates that are, that are running for Board of Education. All of them were invited. We have three that are here with us today. I'll allow them to introduce themselves as we, you know, go through the event, but I'll have a seat, and then I'll begin some questions. Oh, I totally messed up. I should have left room for you to translate that. I apologize. Maybe you can catch up on the main points, and then I'll try to do better as we go through. Oh, let's continue, okay. All right, well, I'll have a seat. So I'll just start off by having each of the candidates introduce themselves for about three minutes. You know, tell us who you are, you know, the ticket that you're running with, and anything you'd like to share about your candidacy.
Los candidatos se van a presentar uno por uno.
Starting with Lynda. Yo me llamo Linda Stork. My name is Linda Stork, and I am running on the student-first ticket for a seat on the New Brunswick Board of Education. I am a longtime New Brunswick resident. I had, I worked for the public schools. I was a bilingual kindergarten teacher for over thirty years. I had my own two children and several other children that I had guardianship of in the public schools. So I've had a lot of experience with a lot of the schools over the years. And I just, I'm excited that now that I'm retired, you know, I have the time and the ability. I have the professional experience. I have degrees in bilingual multicultural education and urban teacher education, and, you know, everything from early childhood up. A lot of professional expertise and personal experience, as I said, that would help me to make good decisions for the future of our schools. I really think we can do better. And I would love to have the opportunity to get in there and be part of making that happen. So I'm excited to be here to answer any questions that anybody might have. And I will pass it along, or no? I will. I don't even remember what I said. Me llamo Linda Stork y soy residente de New Brunswick más de cincuenta años. Mis hijos asistieron a las escuelas aquí, otros mis ahijados también. Tengo mucha experiencia profesional tanto profesional como personal con las escuelas de esta ciudad. Yo creo que podemos mejorar el sistema escolar. Yo quisiera ser parte de ese proceso. Yo tengo, yo creo que yo tengo la preparación y la capacidad para hacerlo y me gustaría tener la oportunidad. Me alegro de estar aquí para contestar preguntas. Voy a pasar a mi compañera Jenny.
Buenos días a todos. Mi nombre es Jenny Mendez. Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Jenny Mendez. I'm running for Board of Ed member. I've been a resident from New Brunswick for thirty years. And I see my children going to school here in New Brunswick for a long time, just as I grew up here in New Brunswick, went to schools in New Brunswick. And I own my own business in New Brunswick, in the heart of New Brunswick. And I want to bring back to my community, because being Mexican-American growing up in New Brunswick, it comes with hardship, coming from families that come from a different country, different background. In itself, it's already hard for them. So the education part in my community is something that maybe is not something spoken at home. And I want to bring transparency into many homes in New Brunswick that are unaware that we can do so much. Again, I'm a parent, and I have the time, like Linda says. I run my own schedule since I'm a business owner, so I have flexibility to be able to participate and be part of the education system in New Brunswick, which I love community and I love to service community in itself. Thank you. Mi nombre es Jenny Mendez nuevamente. Vivo en la ciudad de New Brunswick por más de treinta años. Veo a mis hijos lleno de las escuelas de New Brunswick y ser estudiantes de New Brunswick igual como yo lo fui por muchos años. Tengo mi negocio aquí en New Brunswick. Me gusta ser eficiente para la comunidad, pero también traerle la comunicación sobre el sistema educativo a nuestras familias hispanas, ya que muchos no es algo del cual tocamos en temas en las casas hispanas. Y es algo muy importante para todos los estudiantes lo que es la educación en nuestras familias. Gracias. Okay.
Excuse me, do you repeat it to the number for five more?
Jenny Mendez Romero. Jenny Mendez Romero?
Jenny Mendez. Okay, gracias.
Okay, I'll keep it short and sweet. My name is Brittany Richardson, and I'm running also for, to be a member of part of the school board. I'm also a resident of New Brunswick, born and raised here. I just want to be a part of this school board so much due to, I am very passionate in anything that I do, especially when it comes to the future of the children. And also, I want to bring more awareness to the community about being a part of events like this and how important it is for our voices to be used in the school board. We can do better.
Mi nombre es Victorlin y soy parte del departamento de educación. Soy una participante y estoy muy interesada en las actividades, en el desarrollo educacional de los niños. Y estoy muy feliz de estar aquí participando.
Thank you.
All right, thank you so much for all the candidates to introduce themselves. I appreciate that. So hopefully that gave folks a bit of a, you know, briefing on what the candidates who are attending are about and what they're hoping to accomplish. I have a few questions to start things out, that I'll ask each of the candidates to respond to, and then we'll open up for audience questions afterwards.
Tengo unas preguntas para los candidatos, y después te abriré el foro para las preguntas.
Great. So my first question that I'd like each of the candidates to answer, and you can answer in the same order, is what is your vision for the New Brunswick Public School System?
La primera pregunta es, ¿cuál es tu visión para las escuelas públicas de New Brunswick?
First?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
If you want it in a different order, that's also totally fine. Up to you.
Good as any. So... I see us moving forward. I don't want to sound pessimistic, but we, our school system is not in very good shape right now. And we are going to need to think outside the box and come up with some new solutions. So I don't know exactly what that will look like. I don't have a crystal ball. But I know that if you just, you know, if you keep doing the same thing, you're not going to get different results. I'll just give an example. A lot of students get suspended every month, a lot. Sometimes a hundred and fifty. Last meeting I was at, they reported a hundred and seventy-seven for the previous month. And that's just out-of-school suspensions. And that doesn't count how many days they were suspended for. This, it's not, it's not working. It hasn't solved the problem. There are still discipline problems in the schools. And the out-of-school suspensions are for fighting and for drugs. So this doesn't even account for other types of incidents that are happening. Bullying type of incidents, disrespect of staff or faculty. That's not even counted in. So the discipline method is, is, has not been effective. And we need to start looking at something different. And when a student is suspended from school, there needs to be intervention with that student. So we need to look at a whole new system. And I know that takes time, and it takes a commitment. It takes a commitment to find something that has worked in a similar district, and the implementation will take years. But at least we will know that we are moving towards something positive instead of just relying on the same tools that haven't been working. So, you know, I see us doing things differently. Not only with discipline, but I use that for an example, so that we can have a safe, secure environment, because that really is fundamental, fundamental to anything else happening in the schools.
To, I think, do you want to translate?
I'm sorry, can you translate? Let's see. La visión que yo tengo para las escuelas de New Brunswick es que tenemos que hacer las cosas diferente, de diferente manera. No seguir haciendo lo mismo, los mismos, suspensiones, ay, pero la disciplina no, no está... Entonces vamos a suspender más estudiantes, pero todavía hay problemas en las escuelas de disciplina y estamos suspendiendo muchos, muchos estudiantes, este, con los que están suspendidos. Se quiere una intervención intensiva, no solamente ponerlos fuera de la escuela, ¿de qué? Eso hace para mejorar la situación, ni de ellos, ni de la escuela, ni de la comunidad. Eso no ayuda. Tenemos que empezar a pensar en otras formas diferentes de tratar con los problemas. Y quiere, para implementar un sistema nuevo, va a querer de tiempo, de recursos, de dedicación, porque eso no se hace de la noche a la mañana tampoco. Eso es un proceso que dura años, pero por lo menos sabemos que en estos años estamos trabajando hacia algo positivo, que no estamos sin lo mismo, de hacer lo mismo con las mismas herramientas que no están funcionando, ¿no? Y yo puse un ejemplo de la disciplina. Lo mismo es igual en otros campos donde no estamos avanzando muy bien en el progreso académico. Y eso tenemos que pensar en otras maneras nuevas de resolver los problemas. Pero puse el ejemplo de la disciplina porque es fundamental. Si no tenemos un ambiente seguro donde, donde los estudiantes se pueden sentir bien y seguros en la escuela, de ahí empieza todo. Okay. Gracias.
Thank you. Back to your questioning or regarding envisioning. I envision students coming out of our school, not just as New Brunswick being known for its athletes. I envision seeing ten years from now, five years from now, scientists coming out of our cities, doctors, architects, engineers. I met a student who actually works with me in my office. And in order for, he's going to engineering school now. But he moved out of New Brunswick to finish high school in a different city. And that really sucks, because we would have won, we would have been so proud to say, hey, so-and-so graduated from our school, and it's now an engineer, right? Now, all you hear is athletes coming, which is great, that's awesome, right? But what happens with those that do not want to become athletes? That are our ages, that are doctors, our future, you know, scientists. In order for us to not forget about the rest, we need to, like Linda says, prepare ourselves, because what worked for us as students growing up does not work for them anymore. And we need different methods of discipline, different methods of motivation, especially after COVID. There's an article out there that said that, you know, we, academically, we were worse than cities that are near us. And I envision myself with a lower rate of dropouts in our school district, more families being integrated into our school activities. When we were campaigning, there was a teacher that mentioned there's no contact between us as teachers and the parents. There is a huge gap between parents and teachers today in age. Years ago, we were able to tell why Sally was sad, why Sally had absence school, because there was something going on at home. If, as teachers, we have no communication between parents, there is no way we can help the student. And prepare ourselves. And that's a loss of communication that was lost within the last years. And we need to bring that back, right? Some things we can bring back that we used to use in the past. But we also need to accommodate ourselves as parents, teachers, to the new crisis, which is mental illness. So I envision myself bringing those red flags out there on these Board of Ed meetings once we are able to participate in them.
En español, lo que yo estaba explicando es que muchos estudiantes de New Brunswick salen como atletas. No muchos, pero nosotros somos conocidos como la ciudad que tiene muchos atletas en New Brunswick. Que es buenísimo, pero lo que nosotros queremos es sentirnos orgullosos, que salgan de aquí doctores, arquitectos, ingenieros, futuros científicos. Pero no, nos enfocamos a veces en un grupo de estudiantes, y se nos olvida a los demás. Y al olvidarnos de los demás, perdimos el enfoque de ellos, terminan saliéndose de la escuela. Entonces, yo me gustaría ver un futuro donde New Brunswick se diga que de ahí salió un doctor, un abogado, un ingeniero, alguien que, que nosotros tuvimos el porqué él se quedó aquí en la ciudad o ella se quedó en la ciudad. Dí el ejemplo de uno de mis empleados que trabaja conmigo, que ahora está estudiando para ingeniero. Él tuvo que salirse de las escuelas de New Brunswick y mudarse a otra ciudad para él estudiar ingeniería. Entonces, es una pérdida para, para la ciudad, porque es algo que nosotros no deberíamos dejar que suceda. Entonces, todos estos cambios, el número de graduados está bajando bastante. Después de COVID, hay mucho, este, mucho riesgo en la salud mental de los estudiantes. Entonces, lo mismo que nosotros como estudiantes hace años nos funcionaba, nos motivaba, ahora no es lo mismo para estos nuevos futuros, estos estudiantes existentes. Entonces, hay mucho trabajo que hacer. Siendo parte de este equipo educativo, me gustaría traer todo eso a la mesa. Gracias.
As far as me being a part of this vision, I just feel like short and sweet to the point is knowledge plus action equals power. And, you know, it's enough to promise New Brunswick all of these things and build these nice schools, but we have to put the action with the knowledge, so that we can become the power. We can't, we need somebody that you vote for to follow through with these promises. Yes, I agree with the discipline, out of control, we can do better. We need different programs to expand these children's minds that are in different fields, that want to be something other than, like they said, athletes. And I agree with that completely. However, you know, we need to show these kids by example. Like, we need to get these programs together and get the community out to be a part of it. We need to be every race, every background, to get out there, to be a part of these kids, and, and continue to fight for our community back, so we can make these changes in school. It's sad to hear, you know, these kids going through what they're going through. And I just want to be a part of a positive change moving forward, a part of that action. Thank you.
Es bueno que nosotros tengamos buenas escuelas y que construyan escuelas, está bien. Pero también debemos de seguir un programa y quedarnos en ese programa y que nuestra comunidad, nuestros padres sean, participen más en la educación de los niños. Y, y que sean, yo soy, estoy muy agradecida de estar, a participar en este, en la educación. Y estoy de acuerdo con lo que dijeron, nada más podemos tener atletas, podemos tener más, más educación con los estudiantes.
All right, thank you for explaining more on your vision for New Brunswick schools. So the next question that I have for each of the candidates is, what do you, as a candidate, have to offer uniquely that is different than the other candidates that are running in this race? Could you repeat that in Spanish? So what, for each candidate, what do they have that's unique about them that makes them different from the other candidates in this race?
Como candidatos, ¿qué lo hace único ustedes para que estén listos para esta posición?
Okay, well, I think I addressed that a little bit. I do have professional preparation in the field of education. Early childhood up, bilingual education, multicultural education. I have many years' experience working in this particular school system and having a number of children in the school system, a number of the different schools. And I also have the mindset of not already being part of the board. We want to come in with fresh ideas and try new things. There has been a tendency for the school board to, I mean, going back to when it was an appointed board, it's only recently been an elected board. And that took several tries. And, you know, there's a tendency for the school board to just go along with whatever is presented. So I don't have that mindset. And especially after I saw what happened to our neighborhood school, which was, the Lincoln Annex was one of my neighborhood schools. So lo que yo tengo de único es mi preparación profesional en el campo de la educación, bilingüe, multicultural, de temprana edad hasta mayores. Tengo varios certificados del estado de New Jersey. La experiencia, he tenido a muchos niños en las escuelas. También esa experiencia. Y aparte, yo no tengo la orientación de una persona que ya está en la junta. Yo tengo la idea de llegar con mis compañeras a la junta, con nuevas ideas y hacer nuevas cosas para mejorar la situación. Yo no tengo la mentalidad de estar ahí solo para, para aprobar lo que, lo que venga. Ha habido una tendencia desde los años anteriores cuando la junta era appointed. Antes el alcalde decía quién iba a estar en la junta, ni siquiera tenían elecciones. Desde entonces, pues, y era una lucha para conseguir una junta elegida. So todavía, los que están en la junta tienen la tendencia de aprobar todo lo que, todo lo que, lo que llega a la ciudad, pero yo no tengo esa mentalidad, porque yo vi lo que pasó en mi vecindario con una de nuestras escuelas, que era la Lincoln Annex, de cómo no tomar en cuenta la comunidad. Yo no voy a ser un miembro de la junta así. Porque eso no es quien soy.
I think what makes us different, or makes myself different, is, like Linda says, you, we bring a different mindset. We have seen what students are going through, we have talked to so many parents, we have talked to so many teachers. And I also am a parent myself. I started really young, trying to help students. I started a youth group in Holy Family Parish for three to four years, and it was a success. And I had between the ages of thirteen to eighteen-year-olds in that youth group. So I know what bothers students. I know that at the end of the day, when they get home, all they talk is about their memories at school. Even though some parents would say, that's the last question the students want to be asked when they get home, how was school? But when they were in that youth group, they expressed their thoughts in school, how... So I think that background of me bringing back... How, so I think that background of me bringing back what I've heard throughout these years will help us bring a light to so many problems that are hidden. And a lot of Hispanic families also wanna trust someone that looks like them, that has that background, that comes from a different country. From what I was told is, you know, we don't see no one in the Board of Ed that we can go to and talk to in our language. So that's a barrier in itself already because the communication is broken, right? You can, once part of the board, they can come to me, the Spanish-speaking families, and say, hey, this is my burden, this is what bothers me as a parent. Is it something that you could bring to the meetings? Is it something that we can get across? So I think that's a huge difference that I would bring. I can say that most of the students in our public schools are Hispanic. And they come from a Hispanic family that has different mentalities. And I am familiar with those kind of families. So being part of the Board of Ed will help even now and bring my suggestions of so many worried families out there in New Brunswick. I think that's what makes me different from, or unique.
Lo que yo estaba tratando de explicar es, lo que me hace a mí diferente de los candidatos que ya existen en el sistema educativo es que yo represento un color, represento una familia, represento una cultura. Represento una familia que, el gran porcentaje de los estudiantes en nuestras escuelas públicas vienen de esas familias, vienen de otros países y tienen problemas. Y quizás no tienen estos papás a quien ocurrir ir y hablar sobre estos problemas que están pasando porque no tienen la confianza, pero sí ven que alguien de su comunidad, alguien familiar, que alguien que se parezca a ellos, que hable como ellos, van a sentirse cómodos de ir y proponerles un problema y nosotros darle la solución. Lo que también di de ejemplo es de que yo empecé un grupo juvenil hace años en la Iglesia Sagrada Familia en New Brunswick, y fue un éxito total. Donde los jóvenes podían venir y hablar sobre sus problemas, y la mayor parte de sus problemas venían de escuelas. Entonces, yo sé, tengo esta experiencia de cómo poder dialogar y hablar con varios estudiantes y papás a la vez.
I feel like I am unique. What makes me different is my background. I am an African-American woman, and we can't leave that out, being in the mix of these situations with the school board, anything. You know, I would love to be a part of the board because no matter the background, no matter the race, no matter the, anything, I can relate to every part of any kid going through, what they're going through in that situation, you know, especially born and raised in the city. It's my job to give back to those kids what we didn't have, and that's what makes me unique. I'm extremely passionate about a lot of things, especially these kids, and having opportunities for them to move forward in a positive fashion towards their future.
Lo que me hace única es que yo soy afroamericana, y es lo que hace que me haga parte de la comunidad y que los niños sean capaces de tener a alguien que los represente y es que los...
I forgot the last one. Where was it? Yeah, I can relate to any background, yeah.
Y que está, que puede, es capaz de comunicarse con cualquier tipo de cultura, y no importa de dónde seas. Es capaz de comunicarse y tener un buen proceso positivo con los niños. Entonces, está dispuesta a participar y ser parte de la comunidad y de la educación de los niños cuando necesiten la ayuda.
Alright, thank you. So I have one final question to put to the candidates before we'll then open it up for the audience to ask any questions that they would like. So feel free, for folks that are in attendance, to start thinking of what questions you would like to ask the candidates.
La siguiente pregunta para los candidatos.
So my question, my final question for the candidates is, school safety is a top concern for many parents and students, in particular at the high school level. What specifically would you do to address this problem?
La seguridad de las escuelas es ahora un tema, entonces, ¿qué es lo que tú harías para hacer esto un suceso en las escuelas que pase?
Okay, I actually picked this for my example of the first question, but I think it's important that we take a new tack. And we need to, we need to find, there are programs out there that have been successful in other similar places on a restorative justice model. There are also people who say, oh, but that doesn't work. Well, it takes time and it takes resources and, you know, it takes dedication. And that would be the route that I would, that I would want to go. In the meantime, the other piece is the mental health. At the last board meeting, they said they would try to, you know, maintain the levels of mental health staffing after the COVID funding is gone, like maintain, we need more. They seem to be saying they were doing a good thing by maintaining it without the extra funds, but no. No, we actually need many more mental health resources. And the excuse is about not being able to find the people. No, you need to look harder, pay more, whatever you need to do. So, yo ya hablé sobre esto en la primera pregunta, era mi ejemplo. Yo estoy a favor de un modelo así como justicia restaurativa, y para los que dicen que no trabaja es porque no lo han implementado bien. Eso quiere tiempo, quiere años para implementarlo, quiere recursos, dinero, quiere dedicación. Este, pero tenemos que hacer algo diferente. Este, lo que estamos, este, la manera, no está trabajando, no está trabajando bien.
You mentioned a part about safety in schools, right? And I think when you mentioned safety in schools to a parent, and we spoke about this in the last meeting with the parents, the first thing that came to their mind was fighting in schools, right? And I think they're close hands in hand where we integrate more family involvement with schools, I think it's gonna decrease the fighting in schools, right? Because you're gonna have more families walking into schools, be a part of a whole community. And with that, plus discipline, I know Linda has cited out-of-school suspension. I'm also a firm believer that out-of-school suspension is a no. And a lot of parents are against it because it puts kids, students, out on their own in the streets because most families in New Brunswick are working families. So there's no way a parent's gonna take a day off to be with their student at home for a day suspension. So that's when you give the student the freedom to do what they wanna do. When you move them out of school and you suspend them out of school. Let's bring back the in-school suspension where they actually get to stay in school, right? While they're being suspended. So there's so many methods that we can use to make our schools safer, safer. I know back when we were growing up, we had the great program, and the DARE program, which also helped. And from what I'm told, those programs don't no longer exist, right, in our communities? So something similar, also the drugs, bringing drugs into our school, I think that's huge. And it's something that we as parents don't really know about as much. How many tests are being done every month in our schools? There's many tests being done for drug use, and many are coming back positive. So how about we target and see where these drugs are coming from within our school, right? And, or let the parents know, that's something that us as parents should be able to know. Hey, there was 100 tests being done in the last month, how many is it this month? We just wanna know. That would be, there's a conversation that's missing in our dinners at night saying, did you know this is going on in your school? And then, we're advocating parents, we're advocating children, but we're making awareness too as well in order to bring safety.
Hablando sobre unas escuelas más seguras, va de mano en mano, creo en la disciplina, sí. Pero también creo en que al suspender al estudiante y sacarlo de la escuela, los estamos poniendo en la calle. Les estamos dando la opción de hacer lo que ellos quieran porque venimos de familias donde son trabajadores, somos familias trabajadoras, donde quizás mamá y papá no tienen a la economía para quedarse un día fuera de trabajo porque su hijo quedó suspendido. Entonces, al lugar de suspenderlo, podemos retenerlo en la escuela y buscar algo que ellos puedan hacer adentro de la escuela. Esto es sobre la disciplina, y todo eso va a ayudar a hacer unas escuelas mejores y más seguras para eliminar más pelas dentro de la escuela. Podemos hacer más eventos donde podemos involucrar a las familias, a los padres de familia con los estudiantes para que de una forma los estudiantes se sientan ocupados o se sientan que sus papás tienen importancia sobre su educación e eliminan cualquier tipo de queja o disciplina que puedan provocar peleas entre ellos en las escuelas. Luego, por último, también podemos agregar que las drogas en nuestras escuelas han incrementado, y nosotros como padres deberíamos de tener acceso a saber cuántos exámenes de drogas se le hacen a nuestros estudiantes por mes, que por lo que yo sé, son bastantes. Y bastantes regresan positivos. Entonces, si nosotros como padres no tenemos esa comunicación con nuestros hijos es porque nadie nos está avisando qué es lo que está pasando dentro de las escuelas para nosotros tener esa conversión en casa y prevenir.
To increase the security in school, that's pretty much like the safety. I feel like the first thing we need to do is pretty much include the students and ask them what makes them feel safer, what programs would they like to see? And, you know, have them interact with the teachers and the adults in the school more. They may know one or two teachers, but they wanna get to know all of the people that they can reach out to if they feel unsafe. Because going to the city council meetings, I've learned from students coming there that they don't really feel included. So I feel like that's gonna be our first step in making sure the schools are safer is including those that require, ask them what they require to feel safe. And then we can include the parents on how the students feel and make the community feel involved before we make a decision on their safety. Because what works for us and what works for the parents may not necessarily work for the kids because they may see things differently, they're going through things differently. This is a different generation than where we've grown up. And I feel like that is the first step to increase better safety and see what we can do on the budget side with the parents, but first we have to include the kids.
Lo primero que debemos hacer es incluir a los estudiantes para que ellos sean involucrados y también tomen una parte importante en esa decisión, qué programas les gustaría tener, qué actividades les gustaría tener para que ellos se sientan parte de ese programa. Entonces, cuando ella va al Consejo de Estudiantes, escucha mucho que los niños no son incluidos, que no les preguntan, que les gusta, que no les gusta. Entonces, es muy importante incluir a los padres y preguntarles qué les gustaría, que tengan voz. Y voto también, tanto padres como estudiantes mismos, y tener una conversación acerca de eso para que sea un programa que tenga beneficio positivo hacia los estudiantes.
Alright, thank you. Thank you candidates for your answers to the questions that I had. And now I'd like to open it up to any of the other folks that are joining us today to ask any questions that you may have. You can ask either a question for all of the candidates to answer or you can, if you'd like, ask a question of a specific candidate.
Muchas gracias a los candidatos por sus respuestas, y ahora la audiencia, si tienen alguna pregunta, alguna específica para todos o para alguien individual, que por favor la haga.
I have one. Habiendo mencionado sobre los programas de DARE, que es cuando incluye la Policía de New Brunswick viniendo a las escuelas, me informan que todavía sigue en efecto para los grados de escuelas elementarias. La otra cuestión sería que tenemos escuelas que no tienen los detectores elementales. Hay muchos controversios en eso si ponemos detectores elementales en las escuelas. Serían hacerlos como prisiones, de una manera que tienes que ir, pasar un montón de seguridad para ingresar a la escuela, también de la misma manera a los estudiantes, retrasar los horarios. ¿Cuáles son sus puntos de ellos, dónde quedan sus ideas basadas en esos de la seguridad? La otra cuestión que tenemos es en términos de la ayuda mental, al igual que también las sustancias de drogas y el uso. ¿Qué serían algunas de sus ideas para tratar de prevenir eso? Porque sabemos que, como mencionabamos, hay muchos problemas en relación con lo que es este, los problemas de salud mental que causan peleas. Similarmente, vemos que muchas de esas personas están en escuelas elementarias con sustancias, son suspendidos, y hay una gran cantidad de alumnos pequeños que son enviados a lugares psiquiátricos, que les empiezan a poner medicinas y todos esos, en vez de que haya, por decir, una manera más diferente de, cómo se puede decir, de acercarnos a estos niños, como mencionaba este, una de las candidatas, muchos padres no saben cómo acercarse a sus hijos o a veces con quién hablar. A veces los recursos prefieren ir y contarle a alguien más que no están cercanos a ellos, y que gran parte de esos problemas vienen directamente de la escuela. Y a veces también tienen cosas en casas que no pueden confiar a sus padres o por qué no tienen esa cercanía. What I was mentioning was, what's one approach to ensure security at our schools, such as the metal detectors? There have been some controversial topics being spoken on it, that if you put metal detectors on elementary schools, you start making it really uncomfortable for people because they say, oh, well, you're making it look into a jail where you have to wait to go in through all these doors, get checked. It looks like a jail instead of a school where you just go straight in. And the other thing is the concern for some of the stuff that is going on currently with mental health, where we have kids who are sent to psychiatric hospitals for depression and other things going on in their lives. One of the candidates has mentioned that there have been some effective programs where they can go in and talk to them if you're comfortable doing that, where at home they might not have that same situation going on for them. Or that many of these issues occur in school. And if they do speak up about these incidents, sometimes they are the ones who just get put into psychiatric hospitals and are just forced to take medications, but there's no really good solution to going about that for them to talk about situations going on in that place in their lives. And it's causing fights at school, suspensions. And like, I think there was a great topic mentioned that what might work for parents in school might not work for the students, that you send them home what is considered free vacation for everybody. That you send them home what is considered free vacation for everybody. Because the kids stay home, the parents have to go to work and teachers go on about their normal classes. And, you know, it's not just about these students that are feeling this way, but it comes down to faculty members that do wanna teach but are unable to do so because of behavior issues. And many of these people are just trying to fit in, look cool. And they're also the ones instigating fights. We've heard from professors who tell us that they have simply quit or moved districts because it's not easy to teach. And they find it hard sometimes to even speak about it to the board of education, where they feel like if they do say something about it, it will go against them or opposing their leadership. So there's no connection between teachers and then and the board of education. And some of the things is that there are parents who don't really put, what would we say, the word, don't put time into their kids to address what's going on in their lives at school or simply don't have the capacity or learning to education to teach their kids, to talk about their emotions. Because many of these people come from different backgrounds where education or discipline is really different for them. So they might not have that experience to talk to their kids about what's going on in school. Many of these students rely to fighting, drugs and things like that. So that was where some of the concerns, like what would you stand on in terms of preventing drugs in school? And then security most of all, that has put a really bad name into the district.
That was a lot.
I, I think the main, main topics we drill down. So there's the question of metal detectors in schools and yay or nay, good or bad. There's the question of how the home life of the students, you know, affects behavior and learning ability in the classroom and what role, you know, board of education or teachers or others in the community have in improving that. There's another issue that you mentioned of teachers themselves not feeling like they have a right to advocate on behalf of their students or on behalf of themselves to the board because of, you know, a culture of, you know, either retaliation or just not, not feeling like they have, you know, have the ability to be heard. Are there other, other issues that, that you would like the candidates to speak to?
I guess what steps or what ideas they might have in mind to kind of stop the fights? Because there's always that debate that you go to school and you're supposed to go to school and learn. And then there's problem where these kids are at home with parents with different backgrounds, different disciplines, but they might be undergoing some type of emotions throughout the school situation that brings that scenario back to, back at home. And from home, they build all those emotions and take it back to school. And it's just creating a back and conflict where they say, oh, well, that's the parent's responsibility to teach their kids. But then these parents might not have that proper education from their childhood to teach their kids. So their discipline might be different, putting them in a situation that does not benefit their education at all. So I feel like what would be a type of solution in terms of that? Or at least the board of ed that makes the final determination? If they were elected, what's one plan they already have to make that work?
So any, any of the candidates can speak to specific, you know, policy solutions or ideas that you have for how to address the issues that Carlos brought up?
I think preventive help is hiring more counselors, right? Because the number of counselors to students is high. So if we can hire more counselors, that way the students are being seen by a counselor. Because I've heard stories where students, it takes them a long time to get in touch with their counselor. So by the time the counselor finds out about what's going on with the student, the student already had five fights. So more counselors is gonna help because these counselors are now gonna be alert and it's gonna prevent accidents. There's gonna be more communication with families. Hire more teachers, right? Maybe we gotta look at how much teachers are getting paid, right? Maybe we gotta look at, you know, what is the, we have, we have to, how can we make the board of ed a safe place where the teachers can come and talk to us, right? Do we, as board members, have to visit our schools at least once a month and just walk down those hallways and see what these teachers have to go through? So we have to step in the place. And as board members, we're gonna go out of our way and actually walk those hallways, right? And talk to those teachers, make them feel like they're being heard. So preventive planning, I think, is, is something that we wanna do. Is prevent before it happens. Regarding the metal detectors, I think it's a really touchy subject because there's so many shootings going on in the U.S. That is so frequent that, you know, do we wanna bring them down when there's so many shootings going on in the whole U.S.? You know, it's, it's touchy, maybe down the road because like Linda says, it might take a couple of years for all these ideas to come together and to happen a good outcome. Maybe down the road will make New Brunswick a safer place. And that's what we're hoping for. And that's when we'll start eliminating all these kind of, you know, extras, like the metal detectors and all these, because now we're in a safer position, right? But I think the metal detector, yes, kids. First of all, tardiness is a huge problem in the schools. I think the metal detector is not one of the main causes of tardiness for students. I think in general, from what I know from teachers coming to me, they say tardiness is like eight out of ten students. So how, why are we, why are our students not going to school or? You know, so, so those are the kind of things that we wanna be preventive, right? I think those are just some things that...
Oh, okay. Hablando sobre qué cambios y una vez que estamos pensando en hacer más consejeras en las escuelas públicas. Porque el número de consejeras que ahorita existe, incluso en la high school, les puedo decir que a veces cuando un estudiante agenda una cita con una consejera, tarda un mes para que ese consejero le regrese el email que le conteste y le dé una fecha de cita. En ese mes, el estudiante ya tuvo cinco peleas porque no supo, supo cómo solucionar su problema. Entonces, contratar más maestras, porque el número de estudiantes a maestras es muy alto comparado a otras ciudades. So la, nuestros estudiantes ahora más que nunca necesitan atención, prevención mental. Y todo eso va de mano en mano. Sobre el sistema para, de alarma para metales, creo que es un punto muy, muy, que no, no se puede tocar hoy en día porque el sistema de metal previene a muchos, muchas matanzas en las escuelas, ¿verdad? Porque eso es algo que nos, en los últimos años hasta está pasando en todo Estados Unidos, no solo en New Brunswick. Entonces, es algo que deberíamos dejar que los papás decidan y yo creo que la mayoría va a querer la seguridad de sus hijos. Y si se trata sobre tardanzas que, que esa máquina nos está haciendo que sus hijos lleguen tarde a la escuela, quizás llegar cinco minutos antes de la hora normal, que sí eso le está tomando tiempo. Pero las tardanzas en nuestras escuelas públicas es mayor de lo que todos estamos pensando. Y estos son nuestros futuros trabajadores. Entonces, si ahora mismo están llegando tarde a sus escuelas, la mayoría de sus estudiantes, ¿qué podemos nosotros como educas, eh, sistema educativo hacer? Para que ellos los motivemos a llegar temprano a las escuelas, los motivemos a que hagan sus citas con sus consejeros, que tengan más comunicación con sus maestros. Entonces, todo eso es preventivo. Solo se trata de que nosotros como miembros educativos pisemos estas escuelas, que, que los estudiantes también sepan quiénes lo representan, ¿verdad? Que vean nuestras caras, que sepan con quién pueden ir a quejarse, que sus papás tengan a dónde ir y, y comentarnos sobre lo que están pasando sus estudiantes y maestros también.
Okay, I have a simple question. Maybe you can explain what is the, the work of the board of ed? So parents can understand what kind of topic you can manage as members of the board? Because this is things that you cannot be able to do. So what would be your job duties?
¿Va a traducir la pregunta? Sí, como, como este, la pregunta es, muy siempre me gustaría que por favor nos explicaran cuáles son sus, este, asignaciones de trabajo como miembros de la mesa directiva del grupo de educación de New Brunswick. Para que muchos padres entiendan o comprendamos qué casos, qué preguntas podemos traerles. Ustedes, ¿qué manejan, qué representan, qué parte representan en la educación de los niños? Porque hay cosas que ustedes no van a poder hacer, pero hay cosas que sí pueden hacer. O quizás nos pueden explicar un poquito más cuál es su trabajo como, o sería su trabajo como miembros de la junta de educación.
Gracias por la pregunta, porque es importante entender que, que la junta de educación, número uno, somos voluntarios.
Creo que este no es un...
Este, este no es un trabajo, no los pagan, es un trabajo de amor. This is a, a work of love. Nobody gets paid, it's a, you know, volunteer position. We do it because we care. Pero también hay que entender que la junta de educación dirige el sistema escolar. O sea, pon las, las metas y la dirección de las escuelas. Pero la día a día, dirección de las escuelas es el trabajo del superintendente y de los otros empleados del sistema escolar. So there's, there's a superintendent and a lot of employees, a lot of employees is the school system, that actually do the day-to-day implementation. But the school board sets like the direction and the policies. That's where I was looking for the, like the policies in place of what they want to see in the schools. So all those employees, the superintendent, and the superintendent work for the, the school board. So todos los empleados y el superintendente trabajan por la junta de educación. So those are some of the... So we can make, I just wanna give one example of something that we would be able to do. But of course, as three out of nine, we could lose the vote. But at least it would be brought up that maybe the priority isn't taking six and a half million dollars of pandemic relief money and using it to build an auxiliary gym at a recently built high school when our academic recovery after the pandemic was the worst in the state. Not to mention the fact, it was disturbing to me that they, they're striving to maintain the level of mental health staffing after the pandemic fund. No, no, maintaining the current level is not adequate. And maybe if we, you know, if, if they hadn't been so quick to approve that, there would have been more money for these other things that we see as more of a priority. Which is the academic recovery and the, the mental health. So nosotros, nosotras vemos más, hubiéramos dado más prioridad a, a la salud mental, tener más consejeros, a, a la recuperación del, del progreso académico, que fue el peor en el estado después de la pandemia. Pero este, la junta de educación hizo la decisión de hacer un gimnasio auxiliario... En, en una escuela, en una, en, en la high school que es relativamente, es una escuela nueva. Y hacerles otro gimnasio cuando, cuando los niños están más atrasados que nunca y esperan un mes para hablar con un consejero? No, la junta de educación sí tiene el poder de, de poner prioridades. We would be able to make some priorities as the board of education of, you know, how the money is spent.
I'd like to ask, first of all, I didn't get your name idea.
Uh, Britten.
Britten? I wonder how's the security situation now? I mean, could anybody just walk into schools? Whoever can answer that? And, and if you do have to get into the school, what, what, you know, what procedure is there? I mean, say a parent wants to, needs to get into the school for a reason, how would they? They can't just walk in, candidate?
They'll go through the metal detector and then the security guard will guide them down to the secretary, well, not to the front desk. And then the front desk will...
So the parent has to go through the metal detector?
Yes.
That's what I'm trying.
And then go to the front desk and then show your ID or where you're coming to pick up and then you'll get a badge too.
I, I also wanted to ask, does the board have a lot, much to do with the curriculum that's, that's, you know, being taught? I mean, i- is there any kind of a guidance to, for the curriculum?
Yes, one of the committees is a curriculum committee.
Oh, good.
En la junta hay un comité de curriculum.
For the first part of that question, could, could we just translate the answer into Spanish?
Nos preguntaron que si, cuál es el proceso cuando un padre o un visitor, alguien visita las escuelas públicas, sí tiene que pasar por los detectores de metal y de ahí son caminados a la, a la front desk, a la oficina principal.
Yes.
Good evening, and I wanted to start by thanking you all for running and for showing up tonight. I appreciate what you had to say about student involvement and listening to the students. The turnout in these elections is very low. And only a small fraction of the students can vote at this time because you have to be eighteen to vote. And there's a movement to change that, lower the voting age for these elections. Governor Murphy supports it. A lot of people support it. I wanted to ask how you feel about younger people voting in these elections? You know, the students who actually have to live with the decisions that the, the people who win the election make. Do you support expanding the vote to sixteen and seventeen year olds?
They should. They could drive in that sixteen and seventeen.
We'll translate the question.
Muchas gracias por venir hoy esta noche. Y mi pregunta es que ustedes mencionaron que los estudiantes deben ser incluidos en las conversaciones, qué es lo que les gusta y qué no les gusta. Y usualmente los votos son muy bajos porque los estudiantes tienen derecho a votar hasta que cumplan la edad de dieciocho años. Entonces, sería bueno que bajara la edad a los dieciséis años. Entonces, ¿qué piensan ustedes de eso que, que, que el, el, la edad para votar sea dieciséis años?
Yeah, absolutely. I've heard the cries from some of the students, attended the city council meetings and I speak to a lot of students. When I attend the, the football games and the basketball games, just speaking to them and they want this so bad. And it will teach them in the future to be a part of the community and what voting means. Because a lot of kids, they don't understand what voting means or what these positions hold and the importance of that. And I feel like this is a great start to be a part of that. And why not, why not? It's about them, it's not about us.
Es muy importante que sean incluidos, estoy de acuerdo, que la edad sea dieciséis años porque así los niños van teniendo, empiezan a tener experiencia y a tomar decisiones por ellos mismos y que sean parte de la comunidad y formar un futuro que es de ellos.
Any additional from the other candidates? Any other questions that people would like to ask candidates? Any other questions that people would like to ask candidates?
I just would like to say that, I agree, I think Britten has a great idea with involving the kids in the safety because, you know, they should know that they are vested also in the safety of the school. I think that's a great idea.
Me gusta mucho la idea de queino Britten involucrar a los estudiantes en las decisiones de, en su educación.
Yo nada más quiero también agradecerles, que son tres mujeres, ¿no?, y como mujeres, este, y dijiste también, no mencionaste la importancia de ser madres, ¿no? El que nos preocupa como madres, como mujeres, este, como activistas, este, mostrar esa solidaridad con lo que está pasando con nuestros estudiantes, porque ellos son el futuro. Entonces, agradezco mucho que como mujeres se tomen el tiempo para estar aquí y que no se den por vencidas, que sigan luchando por estar parte de este, esta Junta de Educación. Y que lo que toca enseñar a nuestros hijos es precisamente lo que están haciendo, a no quedarse callados hasta, a proseguir a pesar de que todo está en contra de la corriente, a seguir luchando por cambiar las cosas que están pasando porque nadie va a hacer por nosotros. Entonces, como mujer la tenemos que hacer posible, ¿no? Entonces, I'm just going to be saying thank you for being here as, as women, you know, as moms, as an activist, as people who cares, that you show, you teach others. Already we talked about youth, you know, you, you, you teaching youth the importance of being your own voice, or to participate. You say very nicely, knowledge plus action equals power. And I think that's important for us to understand. And most of the, the solidarity of as women of color, right? How we came together, ensure that we can have, show this vision to the young generations about, don't be silent, but be active. Nobody's going to come and change life for you. You, as you say, so all of us mentioned here is, is each of us, you know, from young persons to elders, to everybody, to participate, make the changes, because nobody else will go away. So we got to stand up and continue, I said, we just to continue trying, pushing, talking to people. And, and I think even though, as I said, we are going to against the flow, you continue pushing because I think you deserve to be there, and you will be an amazing, amazing, you would do an amazing job there. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions that folks would like to ask the candidates? All right, Britten, the candidates have final words that they'd like to offer this evening?
About April 16th, right? Column B, and we promise change first, students, students first.
Yes, absolutely, the teachers, the students, the parents, it's all about you. It's, that's why we do this for free, it's about the heart, like Linda said. And either one of these candidates will take on that job with pride.
Estamos muy orgullosas de representar la comunidad, y voten para el, el abril 16.
Column B.
Column B, así que por favor apoyemos a, a estas mujeres hermosas que hacen muy buena, muy, muy buen apoyo y no les pagan, todo es de corazón que lo hacen, y muchísimas gracias por estar aquí y representarnos.
All right, wonderful, and I'll just, final word, you know, to emphasize, the New Brunswick School Board election is this coming Tuesday, April 16th, so coming up very quickly. Any registered voter in the city of New Brunswick is able to vote in the school board election. You do not have to be a student, parent, or teacher. You, any, any person who is a registered voter in the city of New Brunswick is eligible to vote, whether you have a direct connection to the school system or not. And if you are someone who is an eligible voter in New Brunswick and you do not know your, your polling location, you can pretty quickly look that up on nj.gov, if you just do a quick online search for Find My Polling Place. It'll probably be the first result that comes up, the nj.gov site, where you can type in your address and find the polling location where you should go to vote on April 16th.
Cualquier persona registrada para votar puede ir a votar, seas parte de la educación o no, si tienes hijos o no, puedes votar. Y si no sabes dónde, la localidad donde votar, puedes visitar el sitio web, es nj.gov, y ahí te va a decir dónde tu localidad, dónde puedes votar.
All right, thank you everyone.